The plan, it's the plan that satisfies the requirement for an element of one kind or another.
And we're at seven o'clock.
It is tricky.
We're at seven o'clock.
Yes, good, all right. Are we recording? Good. And staff here, perfect. Hello. Did you? Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't hear you. All right. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's City of Tombwater Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, August 26, 2025. We're at seven o'clock and our meeting is called to order. Start with roll call. Commissioner Daniel is excused. Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Great. Commissioner Kotek?
I'm here.
Great. Commissioner Nelson?
Here.
Okay, Commissioner Staff, I should have Staff.
Here.
And me, Commissioner Robbins. We do have a quorum, so we're good to go. Are there any changes tonight to our agenda? Anybody? It may be the case that Brad will be joining us later, so maybe we, we may not get the director's report. We'll see how it goes during a little bit. We may have to move it, say, after public comment or even more toward the end. Let's see. Let's go to approval of minutes, some of which are kind of old. A while back. Any remarks? Anybody like to move?
Really like the brevity of the recent ones. So much easier to read.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Good decision. Do you want a motion for a call of the minutes?
Yes, we need to, we need to make a motion to adopt, to approve them.
Okay.
Or revisions or whatever.
Certainly.
Right, okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve all of our minutes. I'm assuming that's what you meant, Commissioner Nelson, all three sets. Okay. And so, any discussion? Okay, joke. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve all three sets of minutes. Tonight, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All three sets are approved. Thanks, everybody. Let's go to commissioners' reports. Anybody seeing, doing anything you'd like to bring to the table tonight?
For this meeting.
Okay. Not hearing any? Okay, so we will move the director's report then sometime, okay? And in that case, then, we will move directly to item number seven, public comment. And I believe we have Ms. Norton. If you would introduce yourself and give us your address and if you represent and are affiliated with anyone. All right. Go on ahead.
My name is Betsy Norton. I live at 1405 Evergreen Park Drive Southwest up on, in Olympia. I was just across the freeway from Tombwater, so I come here a lot. And I am not, I am a member of the South Sound Bird Alliance Conservation Committee, but I'm not representing them tonight, I'm just myself. I just, I have a statement here.
Okay, if you don't. Please go ahead.
Okay. Just by way of explanation, because I'm a member of the South Sound Bird Alliance, I came across this information as part of the hearing because we appealed the SEPA for the Olympia Master Plan. And so, one of the, one of the things that happened during that hearing is we had testimony from the senior hydrogeologist, Jim Matthew. And I just, I thought it was, he made a very good, he's very concerned about the situation in the airport and in that particular area because the groundwater there flows into the deschutes and the groundwater there is also what's used to, for the bush wells, where you're drinking water. And so, he's really concerned about various things that could happen there. Contamination and also low flows if things are over allocated. You know, if the deschutes gets too low, especially in the summertime, it's going to dry out in a salmon can. And so, and this goes for the rest of everything else that lives in that, in that river. And so, what we, so what I've done is just, I supply you with his testimony, his written testimony. And when I get an official copy, I'll send you the link to his, he has a two-hour video, which is kind of long, but I think he's very, it's very, it explains really well this connection between groundwater and surface waters and how things flow in that particular area and why he has these concerns. And I think for, as a layperson, it really made sense to me. And so, I was just hoping that it would inform you in terms of how you're doing both. Because the climate is, you know, drought's going to be coming from above from the climate. Drought can come from below if you do land use and you overabicate your groundwater or you don't pay attention to it. And so, I just think it, it should inform your climate chapter. And, you know, also the land use decisions you guys are making. So, there you go.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time coming here tonight, but also assembling those materials and sending them in through the staff to see if we could get that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will send the video link when I, when I do that, mark and what's important.
Great, thank you.
Can we confirm that a planning commissioner has received Ms. Norton's comments?
Yes, we received the comments.
Yep. Yep. Let's see, and I would just like to note, I think there was another set of comments on the same topic, and I don't have that person's name. Bonnie Blessing, we also received comments from Bonnie Blessing. Yeah. Great, thank you. On, I think, all elements. Very much. All right, are we ready to move on to, I should stop here and say, do we have anybody online? We don't. Thank you. Very good. Are we ready to move to the?
Looks like we received from one other person as well, so we have three sets of comments.
Yes, okay, so, okay, yeah, I was thinking there was somebody else.
From Angela Dürdorff.
Dürdorff, something.
Zaygen Fuchs.
Yeah. On the, on the same topic.
Yeah.
All right. Let's move to then item number eight, our 2025 comprehensive plan periodic, periodic update for our transportation plan element. And I'm assuming you're leaving that, that part of our discussion.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to make sure we could share the screen. Does everyone see the screen all right? Nina, do you see the PowerPoint?
I can see it, thank you.
You're welcome.
And excuse me, Commissioner Kotek. I, I apologize for being so informal. Would, I, thank you so much for allowing me to come and to invite a guest tonight. Our guest is Daniel Dieh, he's a consultant with Fair and Peers. And we're here to talk to you and get your comments about the transportation chapter and transportation element, transportation plan. We have all of those wrapped up into this one document. So, the, the plan in some communities is the project list and then the element in some communities is the, the data and the information that we call the technical side, part two. And so, we do have those pieces all together. The element also, because of the comprehensive plan and wanting to plan around goals, includes not just the part two, but also part one, which is the goals and policies. So, all of, all of these pieces are together in our jurisdiction and so, but we are presenting that to you today, all the pieces. And then, we also, I want to bring special attention to highlight, which Daniel will also talk to, talk to you about, but we emphasize this year our multimodal use, which culminated in the creation of a biking, walking, and rolling plan and that really emphasized how to bring access to folks who have disabilities and who don't have the option to drive and then also to increase the safety of those, of those systems. We heard a lot from the tour that we went on and we heard a lot from the outreach that we've done with the, with the personal outreach in the community at the food bank, but then also when we did the open house, those were some of the main themes that were discussed. So, we wanted to make sure that those were addressed and Daniel will tell you and dig into the data a little bit more for you and tell you how we address those. So, without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Daniel. Would you like to control the mouse yourself? Sure. Mouse and keyboard.
While you're doing that, I'll just mention that I, I like the way that you set up the questions for us to consider as we're, as we're reading the materials and hearing the presentation. For those of you, it's on page 20 of our packet. It's general or specific concerns or comments about the goals that we have, if we need to think about shifts in any timelines to suggest or if you see any unintended consequences or burdens that some of these things might place on people. And I guess I would just like to say at the outset on those general concerns, on the general issues is wherever possible, if you can note or inform, not just us, but you know, what will come to be the element, if there are any budgetary or financial implications. You know, is there a cost that will, that the city needs to bear? In other words, the tax fare, so that kind of thing and the timeframe for that.
Okay.
Go on ahead. Thanks, Daniel.
Thank you for having me, commissioners, this evening. As Dana said, my name is Daniel Dieh with Fair and Peers. Been working with the city on this for about two years now or so. I didn't go back and check my notes to see what time the first note was, but it's been a good bit now. And I just want to make sure you, you made sure that they can see it on the phone. All good. Just a brief overview of what we'll talk about tonight, kind of the order that we'll go in. And I would also ask, if you've got any questions, feel free to stop me at any point. I may not be able to see you if I'm looking up at the screen, so feel free to just speak up or we can, we'll have plenty of time for questions at the end, your choice. We'll talk about the biking, walking, and rolling plan first, then move on to public outreach, goals and policies, the future transportation network, and then the 20-year project list and wrap up with funding conclusions and next steps. So, the biking, walking, and rolling plan is really intended to cover any primarily human-centered mode of transportation. So, that includes walking, biking, using a mobility device, whether that's a wheelchair or a scooter, or roller skating, or skateboarding, you know, anything that is really primarily human-powered input. That also does include electric macro mobility, so things like e-bikes and e-scooters are becoming more popular and are more and more showing up in our need for active transportation infrastructure. A little bit on why we need a biking, walking, and rolling plan. It's really centered around four big items. And that's, the reasons we invest in active transportation include access, community help, vehicle miles traveled, and then mode shift. And I'll break those down a little bit, one by one. So, access is really thinking about where can you actually get to physically and safely with a given mode of travel. So, we all know you can get to lots of places with a car, if you have a car, but if you don't have a car, where can you get without one? Where can you get via transit or by walking or biking? Where can you get not only physically, where can you actually get to, but where can you get in a safe manner as well? We think about community help, so as we think about, you know, being more active and trying to get some exercise in, even if you don't have time outside of work or outside of family obligations, how can you get some exercise in? Maybe going somewhere. Then we think about vehicle miles traveled, which is really a concept that you'll see repeated throughout the plan, both the biking, walking, and rolling plan and the transportation element. And that really stems from both a focus on sustainability and also new state law requirements to focus on vehicle miles traveled reduction targets. At its most basic form, vehicle miles traveled is essentially how many miles is each person in the community driving inside of a vehicle, whether that's transit or whether that's a vehicle by themselves. So, as an example, one person that's on a really crowded 50-person bus, their vehicle miles traveled, yes, the, the bus may travel the same amount of distance that they would have in their car, but if you then divide that by 50 people, obviously, you've cut your vehicle miles traveled per person 50 ways. If you think about it as a carpool, then, you know, then your vehicle miles traveled per person is cut in half versus driving alone. The goals that you'll see in this plan are all based on per capita VMT reductions, so that is essentially per person reductions. And then last, we think about mode shifts, so thinking about how do we shift people away from particularly driving alone? Can we shift them to either carpooling together or biking or walking or rolling or transit? Can we shift some of those things? And really, a lot of this is based around the fact that we only have so much geometric space. Either people are going to be in congestion for longer if they're driving or they're going to be traveling from further away and causing more congestion or they're going to be traveling at different times of the day, so you're just going to be spreading your congestion. So, really, at some point, we've got to think about reducing vehicle miles traveled and mode shift in order to make, in order to keep a good quality of life, but also to meet some of our sustainability goals. So, with that, the, the vehicle miles traveled and mode share goals that we've put together in the draft, or drafted for the plan, again, these are per capita for VMT, so per person, looking at a 27% lower per capita goal VMT by 2040 and a 41% lower per capita VMT by 2050. And that does, is not to say that your overall VMT is not going to go up. I don't want to, you know, overpromise and underdeliver. You're probably going to see more congestion over the next 20 and 30 years, even if we meet these goals, just because there are more people moving to Washington, there's more people moving to Tombwater. So, as that population increases, we're just trying to slow the rate of congestion growth and meet some of those sustainability goals by reducing that per capita VMT.
Commissioner Nelson? Quick question. How did we come up with the 27% and the 41%? What, what was the basis of that?
Yes, so Department of Commerce completed a greenhouse gas emission inventory for Thurston County, inclusive of a wedge tool, which is where you can kind of play with different reductions of different actions. And these are the numbers that we needed to meet the targets in alignment with the state regarding VMT in consideration of all of the other actions that we're taking and also state action. So, this is the exact numbers that we needed to fill those gaps to meet those goals. They're odd numbers and it's because, yeah, data-based and that's exactly what we need.
Yep.
Thank you.
And then on the other side of the house, so it's reducing the number of miles that people are driving per person in vehicles, but it's also thinking about how do we shift some people away from driving alone in particular? So, what we've shown in the draft plan is a 5% shift from those drive-along trips to bike trips, 5% to walking trips, and then 5% to transit trips. So, really trying to, you know, hit it at both sides of reducing the amount that people are driving, but also reducing the number of people that are driving via mode shift.
May I add one thing about the mode shift? Sorry. The mode shift, the mode share goals, those mode shift goals, in setting those, we're accomplishing a Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan action.
There you go.
Those specific numbers?
Uh, no, just to set mode shift goals.
And I want to conversely, the, the figures for mode share were derived at what other plans are potentially looking at and what we think is, what we think we will be able to accomplish, setting ourselves an actionable, achievable goal, given potentially the shift in our infrastructure. But it is, it is also very lofty, 5% of people. Oh, no, this one isn't the lofty one?
No, no, I was going to say, I'd say aspirational, but achievable.
Oh, aspirational, there we go. Aspirational is the exact word, thank you.
On that point, and I've noted, you know, several times throughout on the, on the, on the mode share and shift. Not exactly sure how to word this, but, but, so the city of, the city of Tombwater can only do so much, right? We can provide some opportunity, we can improve the infrastructure around shifting that, we can maybe incentivize, we can do certain things. But after that, it's up to individual people making a choice. Is that fair? So, I mean, that truly is aspirational, right?
And, and one of the points and factors that go into this is that we're working with Thurston Regional Planning Council. And they did a bicycle survey throughout the region and it indicated that, you know, some of the factors that keep people off bikes, specifically bikes in this case, and one of the things that they noted is that there's a chunk of 71 people that would bike if conditions were different. So, thinking about that, 71 people would bike more often. I'm not saying that necessarily they would be bike commuters and bike to work every day, but they would use their bicycle more often. And that's, all I want is one more trip, you know, like, we're looking for plus one, or plus five, I should say, right? Plus 5%, five, out of all the times you take your car, five times out of 100, let's take a bike instead. Right? So, and if, you know, so if we have 71% of people who feel more comfortable doing that, it's a, it's a win.
That 71% of people or 71 people?
71%.
Percent?
Percent.
Oh, I thought you said 71 people.
Oh, I apologize, I think I was speaking too quickly.
Okay. All right.
No, you're good, you're good. I, I don't want this to be a lecture. It can turn into a lecture sometimes and that's not fun for anyone. So, digging down a little bit more on the mode share goals, and I will give you a full caveat that we don't really have great data for this overall for how people are getting around for every trip. What we have, that is longitudinal, that we can understand change over time is essentially census data that looks at commute to work. We also know that most people are probably not carpooling to work and most people are not driving with their spouse or, you know, maybe they're dropping off their kids at daycare, that was me. And then drive, the rest of their trip to work is a drive-along trip. So, it is a little bit higher oftentimes that you see this commute data. 66% of people in Tombwater are driving alone to work. We know that probably things like carpooling would be a little bit higher if we were to look at all trips, because if you think about it, you know, you're often going out to the park with your family or you're going to the grocery store or a restaurant with friends and family and things like that. So, just know that this is off of commute data, just because that's what we've got that we can understand for the first time.
So, I just want to be clear about that because, and I'll maybe bring this up again, the demographic here in Tombwater is shifting to older people who may no longer work, right? So, they're not driving to work. And so, without some more data in some of those other purposes for travel, we're going to be, we're going to be at a disadvantage figuring out the things we might want to do about that since, I mean, I don't know the numbers, but you know, the trend is that we are an aging population that is a retirement, more of a retirement community. I mean, obviously, there still are people who are working age and do that kind of thing and even farther out of our, out of our immediate city limits. But, you know, I'm, I'm just curious about that data shortfall and informing what we need to know for the demographic we have and are expecting over the life of the plan.
We can speak a little bit to this just because as we were looking at this and we recognized there is a data shortfall, we were looking to some of our neighboring jurisdictions and how they answered that. I think Olympia show that they have some, like, like the bike tire in, as, like, that are over the bike lanes, so they're counting cycling traffic and that that is possible, but it would require requesting that from the council to say that that's a priority. And I believe we did put, did we not put a goal in the plan to require more data to explore? Yeah, I believe it is one of the action items. So, that is something we can do, but we, we needed to make a goal now or otherwise we wouldn't have anything.
Correct. I am totally in agreement with that. I'm just wanting to point out that, you know, over time and over the course of, you know, this planning horizon of 20 years and plus, that we need to think about who are the people that are really going to be here. Go ahead, Commissioner Nelson, and then Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Well, I was thinking, I was sitting here thinking the same thing, is that as a retiree, we decided to go down to one car. So, it's all these nuances that are hard to capture, I think, but as the, as the neighborhood I'm in, all of a sudden, the neighbor on one side is a retired couple, the neighbor on the other side has four children, which I think is wonderful. And yet, a lot of those retirees aren't driving their car every day and they don't have two cars. And it's hard to capture all of that. Yeah, I think maybe just being aware of it and then including it in questions for the future, because I was really impressed with the amount of input that you guys were able to secure on the transportation plan. I mean, comments after comments, it was amazing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, so just kind of thinking about it, you know, and asking the questions next time.
Yeah, yeah. This, this kind of data is hard to get.
And there are certain elements in the plan that require metrics and updating every five years. And I think there are pieces, forgive me if I'm wrong, Alyssa, but the, the climate element has five-year reporting metrics.
Yes.
And some of those do feed into what does our VMT look like in five years? Is that one of them?
Which will be calculated by the state using a methodology yet to be determined.
Yes. So, yeah, absolutely. But at the same time, that at least gives us a five-year outlook, how, how did we do? We have what we have, what we have now and we can compare to what we will do. And at that five-year mark, then reassess, reevaluate. And we do have annual updates for our comp plan, too. And if that's required, then as we get there and have more data, then we can make those updates. It's never a absolutely hermetically sealed, in the mummy case, lock it up process. It's always living, breathing, and, and Brad is always saying, comments always accepted, all the time. So, even if we can't make it in now because of timelines, there is opportunity.
Living, breathing.
Living, breathing.
Did I say that?
All right.
Now that's the image, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You're spelling bee. I haven't already, I hate to be a spoiler.
Don't ask me to spell it.
Kirkpatrick.
I'm, I'm presuming you're getting your information on automobiles and trucks and the other thing as far as that is concerned, Department of Licensing, on you how many people from Tombwater have licensed a car. So, can't you get the same information on bicycles? Wouldn't the Department of Licensing also tell you?
They're not licensed.
You don't register a bicycle?
It'd be really nice.
What's that?
Bicycles are not registered with the Department of Licensing. Motorcycles are, but bicycles, even e-bikes, are not.
Oh. Maybe that's what we need to change.
Well, looking at unsafe bike riding practices, I would say so.
That just takes the legislature to get involved to license bicycles and therefore we'd be able then find out where the people live that were using bicycles instead of, this is completely made up then if we don't know. The bicycles might all be in Yell.
Yeah, so this is not completely made up. This is based on national census data and they actually take a subset of every community in the American Community Survey, is the specific part of the census that it's called, and they actually are surveying people about how did you get to work? So, none of this is made up. The other thing I'd say we could look into is TRPC, I know, does household travel surveys. I don't know how often those are, I feel like we missed the boat of those weren't going to be quite ready yet. I don't know if they're ready now.
Maybe two years ago. There's also Google EIE data.
Yeah, there, there's starting to be more sources of data of like actually, you know, phones are tracking us everywhere and know where we're going and how fast we're going and they're starting to get better at inferring, like, are you on a bus? Because there's a whole bunch of other devices also moving around with you at the same time. Or are you on a bike because you're moving slower than cars but faster than walking and things like that? So, we are getting better and better data and insight into this, but I just wanted to point out that, you know, this data in particular is for commute, to work.
Sure.
Better data about how people are traveling all the time.
No, I'll, I'll keep it, let's move on.
Okay. I, I think there's, short of, you know, getting the legislature involved and imposing, say, a burden for registration, it might be useful to explore the household travel survey and being a part of that, I'm sure we would be, but you know, moving that up, especially since the next census is a while off and we don't know if it's going to be accurate. And so, you know, we can, we can be more. And so, you know, we can, we can be more localized and get some, start working on that better data.
There's also programs in other jurisdictions where people can register their bicycle and, uh, with the police department to help, uh, in responding to bike thefts, uh, by reporting the serial number to the local police department, and then that's one way that we could get local data, and also provide some more accountability for, uh, very serious thing of if you depend on a bicycle for your mode of transportation and it's stolen, having some accountability and some assistance in potentially recovering said bike.
Right. Yeah, sure.
One, one thing real quick, so I was down in San Francisco last weekend, I think, and, uh, rode in a Wimu, or, that's what we were calling.
Autonomous vehicle.
Autonomous vehicle. It was fascinating, and absolutely incredible, and looking at the timeline we're looking at, um, how much of that did you factor into this in the later dates? Because, uh, when we shout to our friends in Orlando, they said, oh, that's coming to our city shortly, um, but it was very safe, very secure, very comfortable, very, just everything was amazing. I had several things to say that was, well, maybe just driving around the block to find a safe spot to park me, instead of just throwing me out the door, um, but it was wonderful. And so, I rode it home twice, uh, just because it was such a great experience, and I wanted to just soak it all up, since we don't have that here, um, but I'm hoping that we look at that for, um, how to do this mode shift in mind shift, uh, because with autonomous vehicles, you could have it pick you up at your house, and on its way, pick up multiple other people and drop off. Um, so I'm hoping that cuts down on vehicles, uh, on the road miles traveled by individuals, and do more ride share.
Yeah.
I know it's crazy, but it was incredible.
Definitely a bit weird for us, because our crystal ball is about as cracked as everyone else's, I think. There's a lot of different schools of thought within transportation planning, of engineering, of, eh, are autonomous vehicles, like Waymo, going to increase or decrease VMT? Because, on the one hand, if you're not paying for an Uber driver, an actual person, maybe that's cheaper, but also the technology is expensive, so is that offsetting? Like, are, is the cost to travel the same? Uh, is it going to be more of a shared autonomous future of, there are Waymo cars that, you know, always have someone in them, there's perfect ride matching, and so, you know, it drops you off at your house, and the person, your neighbor next door is about to leave, so it knows to wait on them and take them, and so it's not circling the block? Or is it, you're, you own a private car, and you're in a place like Seattle, where it's very expensive to park, so you send your driverless private car around the city all day long, because you didn't want to pay for parking, and now you've just made gridlock even worse? So, there are different schools of thought on which way that's gonna go, and we're really not sure, and a, a lot of it's gonna come down to the choices we make at the policy level.
That's why I wanted to bring it up, because I think that ride share mentality and that ride share methodology would be incredible, um, because I agree, I saw multiple driving by with just one person in it, and if it's a secure piece, and then they also have the one that's like the bubble bus, that doesn't look like a vehicle, uh, but it's four seats, stuff like that, I'm really interested in, feel like, if we just keep this on the horizon and keep pushing this, and say, hey, that'd be a great thing, test it out, bring, bring it in our direction, um, that'd be a really great thing to do. I mean, we're a capital city, Washington, which is very green state, and, um, it doesn't have to be in a city where they're testing it, it would be wonderful to see it in Olympia, Tumwater, Lacey. Thank you.
Um, so moving down to the, the next big concept is called level of traffic stress, uh, and this is, uh, a fairly newer methodology that we've started using in transportation engineering and planning, of looking at, not only is there a bike or a pedestrian facility, but how safe and comfortable does it feel? So, the scale goes from one, uh, to four, uh, with one being in green, meaning that it is safe and comfortable for all modes, uh, and all eight, or for all ages and abilities, versus LTS four is more of the, you know, bicycle commuter, road warrior, gonna take the lane, like, not gonna be scared of cars, uh, kind of, those are, that's kind of the scale of kind of different types of users that we've got. Uh, essentially, what most communities are aiming towards is a LTS two or better facility, uh, network, like a, a more comprehensive network for both bikes and cars, or, sorry, bikes and cars, bikes and pedestrians, uh, which means that most people are gonna feel comfortable, uh, for most of your network. Uh, when we get into the specifics, specifics of how that works, uh, for, there's slightly different lookup tables that we use for pedestrian versus bicycles. For pedestrians, uh, the LTS methodology that we've put together is really based on the roadway classification, so is it a local collector or arterial roadway? And then we look at, what is the ped facility? Is there no pedestrian facility? Is there a sidewalk on one side, or both sides, or is there a fully separated path or trail? So that ranges anywhere from, if there's just no pedestrian facility within the city of Tumwater, we're gonna count that as a four. Uh, it's a highly fair, or fairly high-stress facility, even if it's just, you know, your local road that has relatively low volumes, versus, uh, if you've got a separated path or trail, that's gonna be a one on all of the different roadways. So, it kind of varies between there. Uh, as you can see from the map, there's a lot of red on there, uh, just because there are a lot of places on the collectors and arterials, uh, which are, what are highlighted on this map. Uh, there are a lot of places that just still don't have, uh, full pedestrian facilities, uh, or no pedestrian facilities within Tumwater. A lot of that's due to, you know, annexation and things like that over the years, uh, a lot of, uh, places that, uh, a lot of communities like Tumwater, where you've had things annexed in, they were at accounting standard, now it's annexed in, but along with that annexation doesn't mean that you suddenly have sidewalks everywhere and things like that.
Or just past standards, and...
Yeah, past standards.
Yeah, they were annexed quite some time ago, and the standards were very different.
Yeah. Uh, when we look at bicycle, or bicycle level of traffic stress, it gets a little more complicated, because when we think about bicycles, they are often in the road a little bit more, even if they're in a separated bike lane. Uh, so we really look at things like speeds, uh, on the roadway, the travel, or the speed limits, uh, we look at the amount of traffic per day, the annual, annual average daily traffic, and then we look at the type of facility. So that goes anywhere from no bicycle facility, all the way to a shared-use path that's fully separated out. There's a lot of nuance within there, uh, on different types of bike facilities, just because there's a lot of different types. I'd say most of the bike facilities that exist in Tumwater today are striped bike lanes, so kind of that third column over. So you can see for kind of the, the lowest volume and lowest speed facilities, that will get a one or a two, uh, but then, once you start going up in speed and volume, that starts to get into threes, and even fours, uh, for those striped bike lanes. So, uh, again, a lot of bread on this, but there is, uh, a good core of, uh, kind of that orange three. There are some facilities that are at two levels, uh, but very few that are at the one level, uh, right now.
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Um, it does no good to have a striped bike lane if all the trash on the road has been pushed onto it, and that's, that's what you see in Tumwater.
Have a specific action about that in the climate element also, uh, not only for regular road use, but then also in the event of, uh, storm cleanup, uh, snow plowing and whatnot, so that we don't just plow all of the snow into the bike lane, or the sidewalks.
And there are...
On the transportation element, there is an action as well, specifically to keep the, keep those lanes clear.
And it impacts not only, um, the trash, but also vegetation removal.
So those are all considered and included in the...
In the element, the goals and policies.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say, when I was out taking pictures for the bicycle control plan, uh, I would start by just how much vegetation can really make a difference, uh, especially when it's blackberry bushes all the way across the sidewalk, it makes it very hard to use the sidewalk unless you wanna, you know, take your life into your own hands, and might, uh, end up bleeding for the, uh, ability to walk down a sidewalk, uh, this time of the year, with, uh, how thorny those are, so...
I, we received a specific comment from a resident that, uh, was part of the climate policy advisory team. He's, um, blind and does a lot of walking, depends on dial-a-lift and the bus, and he was talking about how much the vegetation, and also unpicked-up dog waste, really makes his ability to walk to and from his home to the bus stop very difficult, uh, slippery, dangerous, sharp, not great.
Hmm.
He took that to heart.
Uh, so, uh, we've talked a little bit about the level of traffic stress, uh, now we're gonna get into, you know, the plans to make things better, uh, the existing pedestrian network, and you're not gonna be able to see it up here on the screen, but in the plan, you can, uh, zoom in a little bit on these maps, and it actually shows sidewalks per side of the road, uh, so there will be two small lines on either side of the road, if there are sidewalks on both sides of the road. Um, over here on the right side, you'll see the pedestrian priority network, which is really where we've prioritized, where are there gaps that would really help provide a more complete system if there were to be sidewalks, uh, on both sides of the road there? Uh, so you can see, some of them are very short, where there's just a small gap, and some of them are very long, uh, where there is just a, a large section of the roadway with just no pedestrian facility. So, uh, this is kind of the prioritization of what to tackle first, uh, when building out new sidewalks and things like that to improve the pedestrian network. Um, similarly, with the bike, uh, network, you can see the existing bike network kind of in the orange or salmon-colored lines on the left side, and then the green lines on the right are the priority network for where to provide those more complete connections, uh, across the city. Uh, any questions on the bike walk control plan so far? We're gonna get into more of public outreach, but... Uh, so talking a little bit about public outreach, uh, I think many of you were with us on the transportation tour, I think you said that was back in February, uh, earlier this year with Planning Commission and the City Council, really appreciate everybody's insight, uh, and feedback during that. There was also a transportation open house, uh, which these pictures, uh, around the slider from that, uh, you can see different sticky notes that people have brought, uh, put their ideas and thoughts and concerns about, as well as how people travel around the city. Uh, people were asked, uh, specifically, how do you travel around the city? What stops you from using other modes of transportation besides driving, and what could make other modes of transportation more appealing? So, a lot of that feedback, uh, that was gathered as part of that outreach, has been incorporated in the plan, in the draft goals and policies, and things like that.
I do want to clarify, though, because we talked, uh, about the use, and about how the data for the use, a survey like this, where people are coming to an event, this isn't necessarily something we, this isn't something we can include in, in that, because the people are volunteering to come, so I want to be clear that that wasn't part of that analysis.
Can be anecdotal.
It's anecdotal.
That's great, that, yeah, has some information value, but yes, it would be great to have some, uh, you know, broader, um, data through some sort of survey or whatever.
We did recently, uh, complete a statistically valid community survey, which did include, um, points where the public brought up, um, a need for transportation infrastructure being one of the largest concerns. Granted, in another area, it was, uh, bike and pedestrian infrastructure was, uh, lower in importance, um, but still present as a priority. And that was a statistically valid survey, um, for City of Tumwater residents across a representative demographics. That was like, one of the top things, that they, they wanted the city to work on, was transportation infrastructure.
Uh, so now we'll get into draft goal, plan, uh, draft goals, uh, for the transportation plan. So, uh, goal one is really about improving and maintaining a complete, uh, system that efficiently supports people walking, rolling, biking, accessing transit, driving, and making regional connections. So, that covers a lot of stuff in there, because we're talking about improving and maintaining a complete system, uh, for all modes. Uh, goal two...
Before you go on, um, and go, I think it would maybe fall under the goal one area, but you can tell me if you think it's a better fit. I didn't really see, but I think it's worth exploring, um, uh, developing partnership opportunities with, uh, whether business, government, schools, medical center, what have you, uh, to, you know, maybe it's using some sort of automated vehicle-type system, but even other sorts of ways to provide transport to those places that people are trying to get to. Is there a way to partnership, say, with the, um, uh, I'm gonna, you know, maybe a big grocery store where a lot of people are coming and going, where people could, you know, pool together? Well, some of that is transit, of course, maybe, but, um, maybe there's other things, maybe to a big medical center, or whatever the other things are. So, if there, if there are partnership opportunities that help us, um, get that connection for people to use, so they're not driving themselves alone, um, but they're, you know, maybe there's other ways to promote, um, you know, some sort of travel for those folks. I think, maybe that's in that, that goal area somewhere.
Are you thinking about people who may not be able to drive themselves, and support for those people? Or are you thinking about efficiency and making sure we're, we're gathering data so that, you know, if this group of retailers on this strip shared some sort of a, some sort of a connection to people who want to come to their place?
Or the latter.
Or the latter.
Anything, but, you know, because I think that in many ways, there's requirements, for example, for public transit to provide, um, you know, the, um, the service, the dollar ride type service, or what have you, for, uh, and, and probably some of it's for necessary kinds of things. But more, are there other opportunities that are, that where the city is not the only one responsible to provide the service? We're not the only one that can, that can do to, to either build out that infrastructure or provide the service and operate it. And can we do something in partnership with some other entity? We're not trying to do it all ourselves.
Okay.
Commissioner Nelson.
This is a, a planner from a different, um, kind of system, but I think of strategies underneath goals, and that really sounds like an excellent strategy.
Yes, I'm seeing it as part of that...
Develop those partnerships and...
Yeah, it's within that overarching T1 area, that it's a strategy like some of these other T1s.
Well, does, does Tumwater have park-and-ride lots? Do they have share lots anymore? I think, I think a lot of those things have disappeared, but those are partnerships.
Yeah, those kinds of things, or, yeah, whatever, whatever kind of thing it is, you know, finding the vehicle, to the driver, or not a driver, or whatever.
I think it's an excellent strategy, because the city doesn't have enough money to do everything.
Yeah, we can't, we don't, we're not gonna have the money to do everything, nor should we, right? We should be, we should explore what, what other people are doing, with, especially a business where we, they're gonna want people to come to their, their facility. Um, are there other ways to help people get there?
I just spent about a month in Seattle, and I, and it was for medical-related transportation, so I thought it was great how, um, certain housing providers did provide transportation, not only to medical facilities, but also grocery stores, and then if you want to look at it in a futuristic perspective, maybe having even apartment complexes, or community living, or co-living, and start to incorporate that, or colleges where people might live on campus and have that kind of accessibility to go to grocery stores, um, or retailers in general.
Yes. There's a whole, there's a whole huge array of things, and I think the key word I'm trying to convey is, can we, can we develop those partnerships? Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
You can do that the other way around. You can have the grocery store deliver the groceries.
Sure.
And you can have a tele, uh, visit with the doctor.
Yes.
So, uh, both of those accomplish exactly the same thing.
Correct, correct.
If I'm not mistaken, Daniel, the latter, what Commissioner Kirkpatrick mentioned, is that not a form of, um, travel demand?
So I'd say...
That will come up later, but I just wanted to point out, because I had a tough time wrapping my brain about, well, what does that look like? So I just wanted to say, um, that is one of the strategies.
Yeah.
Do you have more to add, Daniel? Sorry.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Go ahead.
Um, so then the next goal, number two, is to really prioritize safety and quality of life for, especially for the most vulnerable users of Tumwater system. So when we think of vulnerable users, that's really referring to people outside of vehicles largely, uh, it can include motorcycles, uh, but also pedestrians, walking, rolling, uh, things like that. We've made great en, great, uh, enhancements to protecting people inside of vehicles, between seatbelts and pre-tensioners and... and pre-tensioners and airbags and, you know, crumple zones, all of the things that we do to protect people inside of vehicles haven't necessarily made things safer for people outside of vehicles. So really thinking about the people that are most likely to be seriously injured or killed in a car wreck in that one. Goal T3 is to invest wisely to support a resilient and maintainable transportation system. So realizing that, you know, everything that we build, we have to have not only capital funding for it, but we have to have operations and maintenance money for it as well. If we build the safety road, but we can't maintain it, it's not going to be a very pleasant road in another five or 10 or 15 years.
I think that, to interrupt you again, I'm still on goal three, T3. I really like that notion that carried forward from our prior goals of the lifecycle cost of stuff. We really need to factor that in and, and again, kind of sharing the responsibility, if you will, on that same theme of, you know, partnerships. We have, we don't call it partnerships, but when we, like for example, under T3.4 for new development to pay for their proportionate share of impacts. I think we, I think we maybe need to really think about what we mean by proportionate. That may need, maybe we need more authority, but I don't think it's quite adequate for the kind of impacts that, unless we, unless we redo our math or something. I guess I'm concerned that, you know, a lot of the time that we've got development going out pretty far afield and there's, and it's creating problems beyond just, you know, where the development comes out to the next collector road, you know? And so that travel is going all over the place and we may not actually capture the full effect of that development on transportation. And we're not necessarily requiring or setting up that opportunity for better partnership with those developers to provide how they're, how they're going to really address the transportation impact caused by eventual, you know, full occupation of that development. So I'm kind of, you know, I'm skeptical that we've got strong enough, strong enough...
Transportation impact fees?
Yes.
We are, oh, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
Part of the grant, oh. Part of the grant that we're working on with Fear and Pierce does look at our transportation impact fees and we're digging into that work. Now that the element is in review with our boards and advisory communities, then we've been already starting that work and so it will come to you as well for review.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Kurt Patrick?
You also have to consider the cost to do this. If you go into Southwest Tumwater, basically you've got two lane road with the drainage ditch on each side. Means if you're going to want to put in a sidewalk or even a bicycle path, you're going to have to build a storm drainage system in order to, to do it because you're going to, you're going to be widening the road with a sidewalk and it's going to be sitting right on top of what used to be just a nice little ditch that worked, but it's now no longer a ditch. It's a very expensive system to include stormwater ponds, buying of real estate to make it operate. As we get to putting sidewalks into Tumwater in the future, while it looks nice in the capital plan to say that we've allocated this many thousands of dollars to do sidewalks each year, it doesn't do much when you get into the part of town that's that way.
I'd be added benefit if we do need to improve the stormwater infrastructure along with these roads that we then have additional treatment for the stormwater, which will impact beneficially water quality in the area in Salmon.
I, Alyssa said, what I was just thinking that there are, it's, it's not merely a sidewalk improvement, it's also an improvement from whatever's in the roadway instantly going to, that ditch goes into the creek and goes aqua. So there's other things to factor in as far as the cost of that.
And benefits of a project like that.
Making sure we focus on, do we have the money to do so and have the impact fees and everything? Because my in-laws and Naples just had to pay an extra few hundred thousand dollars for their building to be painted because they didn't plan far enough in advance. I mean, that's just what's going on everywhere right now is everything's going up, the cost of all this, I mean, and then having to redo roads because things aren't being done appropriately the first time, which we just went through. All of that, just paying close attention is to help us.
Including non-monetizable ecosystem services.
Yes, all for that.
Right. Which is a good segue to goal four.
Goal four.
Which is minimize our impacts and advancing environmental goals. So that's obviously doing a lot of heavy lifting, but that also I believe is where some of the VMT and GHG policies live as well. Feedback on goal four. And then goal five is to really build public support for transportation system improvements by incorporating robust outreach as part of transportation plans and design projects. I think this one gets it, something that we see across the planning and design industry of, you know, the, the first time a lot of people hear about a project is when construction starts or right before it's about to start and they come out with the pitchforks then and we'd like the pitchforks to come out a little bit earlier when we have a chance to actually change what we're designing and building. You know, when the pitchforks can be a little more constructive rather than poking holes in things that are about to be built. So trying to have that outreach happen earlier and more robustly.
All for that. I think that's terribly important, particularly the 5.5 and its actions to really help educate, inform and get that participation in with the city on, you know, across the board.
So moving a little bit into the future network, and much like we talked about level of traffic stress, we'll talk about level of service for cars very briefly. It's a grade from LOS A to F, included E. Unlike school teachers, no shade to school teachers, they have a really hard job. But we didn't forget one of the letters of our alphabet when we were grading our roadway system. So the LOS A to C is really like very low volume, you know, there's not a lot of congestion. LOSF is just you're sitting in gridlock, you're, you're sitting through traffic signals for several cycles in a row or you're sitting on an interstate and not moving and things like that. The city has a level of service standard D, except within the urban core area, it's hard to reach LOS E. So with that, we look at the future automobile network and for both existing and future, we looked at 40 study intersections, the same 40 intersections. Of those 40 intersections, 11 of those are actually already on plans to become roundabouts. So those are not considered when we're looking at where new mitigations might be needed, where new intersection improvements might be needed to meet your level of service standard over the next 20 years. So in addition to those 11 intersections, which were already on the plans to be approved as roundabouts, there are five more that would be expected to fail without improvement.
Great, I love this. Thank you.
He's referring to the graph.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little hard to see on the map. If anyone wants to zoom in, I can try and zoom and see if that works.
I just heard about the traffic peanut on Lynnwood.
Uh huh.
So very excited about that.
That would be great.
Yeah. We have...
The blob about.
Blob about, yeah.
Have a number of different words for roundabouts. It can be a peanut about, it can be a dog bone, it can be a wishbone, it can be a, yeah, a blob.
Much, much needed, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
And I see right behind that's one of the Fs.
So, yeah.
With that, we'll move a little bit into the project list and we're probably not going to go through each of the projects individually, but there will be time if you've got questions on any particular line in here, we've got the slides in here. But essentially, I want to preface going into the priority projects with, based on those five goals that we laid out, we have one to three metrics behind each of those that we've come up with to rank and help score things, to help give them a little bit of priority. That's not to say that you're going to build all of your high priority projects and then you're going to move on to the medium priority projects. That's just not how funding works. Sometimes your low priority project just happens to be where you've already got to replace the sewer main and so you're going to do that project at the same time. Or your low priority project suddenly gets really good grant scoring and so you're going to opportunistically use some of that grant funding to build something that's lower on your priority list. But this really just helps think about, you know, of all the different projects, how do we have some kind of rough priority, but also how does that help inform what grants we're going after and what we're trying to chase a little bit? It's kind of a two-way street from that perspective.
Can you just briefly characterize the prioritization method and does it include both a severity of the service diminution, but also available funding or other constraints?
Yeah, so we'll talk about the funding constraints in just a minute. I've got some slides on those that I want to...
These are just, you know, how bad is the traffic?
This is, this is based on all of those goals, so let me go up to the goals and I'll...
I'm trying to pull them up because they're in the plan.
Yeah, so...
Do you have your packet?
Yeah.
I can show you where it is in your packet pretty easily.
And where are you looking at? That high number is higher priority.
Higher priority is, yes. So it got more points the higher it went. So for each of those different goals, we had, as I was saying, one to three metrics or so. And essentially, so for things like safety and quality of life, that was not only were there crashes at this location or is this something that we expect to improve safety, but was it at a location where there were bike or ped crashes or where there were fatality or serious injury crashes in particular? Things like minimizing our impacts and advancing environmental goals, that's things that, you know, are going to tend towards reducing VMT or, you know, providing more access and things like that. So each of those different items had a little bit of those metrics behind them. Essentially, the goals and how the metrics worked out, you know, we try not to sack the deck here when we're setting these up, but there is a little bit of a through line that you'll see and that the things that showed up on the high priority projects that kind of hit that top third of the bucket of the list are all pedestrian and bike projects just because there were more points with the scoring metrics that we had. When we go, I'd also say there's obviously a wide geographic, wide geographic spread across the city on those high priority projects, which we like to see. We don't want to see, you know, hey, we're putting all of our eggs in, you know, just the downtown basket. We, we've got to think about the entire city as a whole, but also like how do we improve the core at the same time? When we go down to...
Oh, Commissioner Kurt Patrick.
Oh. How does a 20-year project list interface with the six-year capital plan? In other words, would we expect to see the same projects at the top of it? Or are we going to end up with this nice one that goes on the shelf and one that is actually going to go forward, you know, from our six-year plan or even that, when it goes to the city council, gets revised in its order?
And I'd say I wish Brandon were here tonight, but I'd...
Our transportation director, transportation engineering director definitely has the better handle on that and leads that work. And it, this plan does inform that work directly. Not to say that only, again, not to say that only the high priority projects are going to go into the six-year plan, that we will have to probably choose some of each depending on what we expect the funding to be. So if we know that there is an annual grant program that's going to give us funding for road... Safe route to school, for example, because there is such a thing and we're going to eventually, when we're at staff capacity, go after these grants. But when, when we have that funding coming in, we can essentially plan for one of those projects a year, so six of those projects on the list. Does that make sense? So whether or not those projects are all in the high category, there would, you know, we would plan according to that way of thinking.
So other projects that may be planned by other utilities. So like you said earlier, for replacing a storm main or stormwater infrastructure or water main or a sewer main and there's a ranked project, transportation project that would be, that would behoove us to do at the same time, that will likely be combined into one project and included in the capital facilities plan.
Whoever reviews the transportation element or plan that's going to be submitted at the end of this year is not going to sit and compare the two and expect them to be the same.
Not exactly.
I wouldn't say...
This 20-year plan is not, is not going to reflect what's in the six-year plan.
Because of the different timeframes and we need to put projects that can feasibly be funded with the funding that we have available or can...
Maybe something that's on here that's a low priority that's in the first year of the six-year plan.
It could be possible.
I'm just, I'm just, we're not putting ourselves in a box with this 20-year plan.
Oh, no, no.
Like everything potentially possible with 20, but pretty close. And the six-year plan really is again tied to the funding, tied to the other things that we can get our monies worth. If we can do another thing, let's do that. But it's also really a large part of our staff to manage. So that could vary and change over time.
That really was the point of my question, is this 20-year plan is getting some interesting oversight in it, but it's not, not binding us anything.
Not binding, no.
We're using your cracked crystal ball. To as a prism of the 20-year plan, going through the cracked crystal ball for the six-year CNP.
There are, so the regional transportation plan, there are two or three projects that feed into this plan and they, progress on those has a different weight. I couldn't say exactly that it's binding, but those projects, it is binding that they're included in this plan. Whether or not we get to them is a matter of, we may have to demonstrate that we were not able to and, and have those kind of, those kind of documentation, that kind of documentation. But it is part of the regional transportation plan that we include them in our comprehensive plan. So there's another layer of that oversight and that like we have that overarching plan that feeds that plan, that plan that feeds that plan and that plan, and it is based on that flexibility and that dance that Brandon does every day.
Some maneuverability is going to be expected if we, we have a big list that's in the 20-year comprehensive, but depending on available revenue or grant funding or other conditions, we may have to manipulate that list in order to just keep, keep those projects moving forward. Is that fair?
We may have to explain ourselves to the...
Yeah, we're going to have to explain ourselves.
Who calls in and says, I saw this on the...
Right, well, I mean, that was kind of my question about, you know, so we got these high priorities that is, you know, we've got this need, this, there's this problem that we're trying to address, but we have to wait for the other pieces, the stars to align with money to implement. So the, the way I understand the six-year plan is more of an implementation. We got the money, we need to commit it, we're doing it. This other stuff over here is, we recognize there's a problem and we need to, we will eventually get to it depending on whether the money shows up.
Yeah, essentially, we are looking for funding for these specific things.
Right.
We do update the capital facilities plan every two years.
On the six-year plan, you may be in the six-year plan for six years.
Well, you may, you may be...
During the six-year or the six-year...
Be pushed out.
Don't, don't expect your project to be built for a second.
Correct, correct.
And I'd say the other thing is the, the project list is built from, and the 20-year plan is built from a lot of inputs. One of the most significant of those is the six-year plan. So we're taking things that are already on your six-year plan and that, I don't want to put a number on it, but it's probably 50 to 60% of your plan of the overall 20-year projects are on that six-year plan. And then the other plans that it comes from is the old transportation element, the, the sub-area plans that you've got for different areas of the city and things like that. So we kind of try to gather everything together and kind of put it all in the same pot, mix it around and then see what comes out. But a large chunk of the projects on the 20-year plan are directly from your current six-year plan, so.
Mr. Stoudt.
Just a quick question on some of these, uh, streets with residential houses on them that you're looking at adding striped bike paths to. Um, a lot of those streets, people use that part for parking of their cars for living. And if you're adding a striped bike path, how are they going to park their vehicles on the street?
Great question. We don't look at it at a case-by-case basis at a citywide plan level. That would be part of actual design of the project. But, uh, in a lot of cases, what we're seeing on a lot of those residential streets, uh, there is either a side street that they can park on is one option. Another is the lanes are really wide right now and they don't really need to be as wide as they are. That's actually one of the things that encourages more speed is when you've got really wide lanes versus if you've got 10 feet lanes, travel lanes, like the, the width, uh, for the vehicle lanes. The narrower those are, the more constrained drivers feel and the more naturally slow they will drive. So, uh, there's a lot of different options there from like, is there enough space to fit it all in? Or is it, you're going to require widening of some sort? Or is it going to require, you know, parking on one side of the street versus the other and things like that?
Would that be a striped center lane as well as bike lanes? So you don't have cars driving down the center, essentially?
Or it could be striped like Lysia Lipton, but I don't care. It's, there is a set bike lane, say through, and this is only on those streets.
Okay.
And parallelly, a busier street, so it's a little bit of added safety.
Okay.
Uh, but at the same time, it's not, you're not having to fight with the cars being parked and bikes as much. Because the bikes have a little more flexibility with it.
Okay, that was just something I was noticing where there were some residential streets that are on here for, um, some medium-type priority bike lanes.
I just want to, um, do a time check. We're, we're past the hour and, um, about how much time do you think you need? I want to leave some, some time if we think, uh, if we.
I only probably need about 20 minutes for.
Okay.
Station unless you all have.
All right. Daniel, do you think you could, um, do things in about the next 15 or so?
Great.
Uh.
Can I ask just one more related question? Your comment about the narrower the street, the more careful people tend to be. What codes do we currently have for width of streets in the neighborhood to assure that a fire truck can get through and ambulance can get through?
That is always the pushback whenever we talk about narrowing streets is, is the widest fire truck in the entire city going to be able to get through, uh, that particular? Is our ladder truck going to be able to get through the residential area? And I'd say there are definitely engineering standards and a lot of that comes down to, you know, uh, making sure that we do still have that width, but also fire trucks can take the entire lane, two lanes if they need to. Uh, like people will move out of the way for them if there's two-way traffic. Uh, so there are a lot of different things that we can do in talking to the fire department and making sure that they still feel it's safe, uh, but also narrowing things down. Quite frankly, usually 10-feet lanes are still actually wide enough for, uh, fire trucks to get through, uh, even.
Well, I'm, I'm no expert on, on width. I'm like, I don't know how wide something is. I just want to make sure that that's a consideration because I have been in a couple of Lipton neighborhoods. I'm sorry, but you got parking, parking on both sides and then somebody tries to turn into the neighborhood. It's a one-lane street, is what it is. And I don't want to see Tumwater go that way, quite frankly.
I live on a private road in Tumwater and I would be surprised if, uh, a fire truck could actually get down to the bottom of my street because of people parking on the sidewalks and, um, so many.
But just, just a cautionary.
Um, when we get into the medium priority projects, we do have more of those intersection, uh, and automobile slash bike projects do start to show up. So things that are both widening a roadway and adding a bike lane. Uh, that's also where a lot of those mitigation projects, uh, live where we were not meeting the level of service standards. So those pop up. And then low priority, again, just kind of, uh, mostly intersection kind of spot type improvements. So those tended to score lower in our scoring criteria, uh, but kind of a, a good chunk of different things. Any specific projects on this project list that anyone wanted to talk about? Interesting, I might do that, but.
Anything?
Uh, then skipping down a few slides to funding. So this is essentially an estimate and this is based on, uh, past performance and kind of, uh, anticipated revenues based on forecasting those out. Uh, Brandon put these numbers together for us. Uh, and this is, you know, where there are all the different funding sources. And obviously, there's a lot of different funding sources that go into capital, uh, improvements for the transportation system. Uh, anything from utility taxes to motor vehicle taxes, real estate excise taxes, otherwise known as REIT, uh, cell tax, interest, you know, all of these different things all are gathered together uh, and gives you a, an approximate annual average revenue of about, uh, $10 million. Uh, we had shown here that you had a shortfall, but I don't know if that was extra money or reverse. We've got to double-check our math on some of this a little bit. Uh, but essentially, you're pretty close to, uh, a physically constrained list with what's in the 20-year projects list. Have come in. Obviously, there are a lot of outside things that come in of, you know, these are all very high-level planning, level cost estimates for a lot of these. And if there's one truism in engineering is that everything gets more expensive as you know more. Uh, you don't know what you don't know until you find out, oh, there's, uh, a water line there that was never on anyone's G I S map, uh, or, you know, all of these different confounding factors that you find out once you get the survey and things like that. But, uh, as anyone who's ever done any work on their house or their car, there's always something else that you find out after they take things apart. So, uh, those are, those are kind of, you know, while it may look like it's pretty well-balanced, it's probably, you know, not quite enough to build everything on that list either. Uh, when we think about funding sources, uh, the things on the top are the different funding sources. Uh, and then there are some options to increase revenue, uh, that the city could consider over time. Uh, those are tax, general obligation bonds, commercial parking tax, and local improvement districts for things that are specifically targeting like a particular neighborhood or things like that. So, uh, there are some options for additional funding if needed. Uh, next step, uh, Dana, you want to?
Yeah, so, um, we are moving forward with Washington Department of, um, Transportation Certification. So the, the plan will go to them. And, um, there's the regional, there's the regional planning council also needs to review the plan and certify it. So those are the two next steps. And then this, um, plan goes with the rest of the comprehensive plan for council review, um, uh, and your own review and with a, a hearing as well. So those are, and hopefully, hoping for that this fall.
We would, uh, uh, see, see the, uh, transportation element again roughly the end of October for recommendation.
You'd see the whole thing again in October, the whole comprehensive plan. So the next time.
Ah, okay, so the whole, the whole shebang.
Little shebang.
As one thing.
Yep.
For an action to recommend something to council.
Yeah.
Okay, the biggie, end of October thing.
Be there.
Please don't print that packet.
Thank you. Um, I noticed, um, one, one thing that we did not really talk about tonight and presumably it'll come up in the WashDOT, uh, review kind of a thing, but, um, and that is the impact on, um, and, and from, um, state transportation facilities. We talked a little bit about the, um, things, other things that are out of our jurisdictions, like the, like the airport. But, um, there's a, we have a little bit of a, maybe another little shortcoming with our data where we don't look at travel on the state highways, primarily I-5 and 101. There's a lot of local trips on those things and they're in a particularly nasty situation where there's a lot of merging which reduces safety. And, um, so I'm, I'm concerned about maybe some of the data shortcomings there and what we know from WashDOT about what, uh, what they may be doing to improve the situation in, in particularly in that I-5, 101, um, interchange.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Commissioner? Um, are you referring to what we were, what we talked about tonight? Are you referring to what's, um, in the transportation element, part two?
Um, it's probably the part two, the technical information.
Okay, so you feel like that is.
Where we don't have, where we, we're talking, um, you know, collisions, crashes, um, uh, things like that. And we have, and we have some fatalities and so on. But we don't have information from that source where there's a lot of local trips.
Gotcha, okay.
And I guess what I'm, what I'm interested in is, uh, you know, there's probably a range of actions that could be undertaken. Um, number one would be, let's just try to figure out some of that data. Um, and then, um, for those local trips. And then there's things like, well, are we, are we helping people understand that they don't have to get on the state highway and make that dangerous merge weave kind of a thing, um, to get where they need to go? Can they go on local streets to get where they need, which is far safer? It might take an extra 15 seconds or what have you. But, you know, are there things that we can be doing to make sure that it's a safer experience and doesn't introduce unnecessary trips on the state system?
Yep.
One thing that does help with that is, um, encouraging electric vehicles, which are more efficient for in-city trips than highway trips. I know that that's not a system change necessarily with the trips that are on the highway. But I know me as an E V driver, I avoid the highway for any trips because my mileage goes down way more if I use the freeway.
I don't know if other people are making that calculation. But we talk about this in the materials, you know, in our, uh, in the comprehensive stuff. We do talk about the state facilities here, but we're, you know, but I'm not kind of going the next, the next level of, you know, so a lot of people use that as part of the local network, which it, which it is. But, um, but it introduces a, a number of, um, problems for us.
Yeah.
Are they for this?
I can just get other questions.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. This is exciting stuff.
All right, thank you, everybody. Um, let's move on. Thanks, Dana. Um, let's move on to, um, if, if people have other comments, of course, we can get them to staff. Uh, let's move on to, um, item number nine, our 2025 comprehensive plan periodic update for our climate element. And Melissa, that's going to be you, right?
Yes, it is.
Right.
Good evening. Um, I know I have shown you many goals, policies and actions over the past couple of months to a year. Um, today is kind of a wrap-up of the climate element in terms of, uh, planning commission. As Dana said, uh, kind of the next steps are putting all the, the comp plan elements together and moving them forward for adoption. So my kind of, uh, last note for you all on climate element is just to reiterate the state requirements and, uh, highlight the outreach that we did, what we heard and how we incorporated it. That's what I said. And prioritization, um, which is applied to a certain part of the plan, uh, which is especially useful for me. So just a refresher on the state requirements for the climate element. Uh, we have a climate mitigation sub-element focused on greenhouse gas reduction. We have a sub-element for climate resilience. We incorporate environmental justice throughout. Uh, having the two sub-elements is a little awkward because there are definitely things that overlap and live in both. But commerce wants them to be in different buckets, so we tried to put them in the right buckets. Uh, the greenhouse gas emission reduction sub-element has to reduce overall greenhouse gas emissions generated by transportation and land use within Tumwater without, uh, kind of exporting that somewhere else. Uh, we have to reduce per capita vehicle miles traveled within Tumwater, again, without moving that somewhere else, which ties into the transportation element that you all just heard about. And the biking, walking, rolling plan was actually funded with a climate element planning money because they are, uh, very, very intertwined. Uh, and the biking, walking, rolling plan is also climate mitigation plan action, so. Uh, lots of birds, one stone, bush, whatever the, birds and stones can all be happy.
Birds and seeds.
And seeds.
Seed, yeah, seed and bird.
Daughter of a geologist, so I'm like, the stones are good. Um, uh, we need to prioritize reductions that benefit overburdened communities and maximize co-benefits for reduced air pollution. Um, and we need to use 2022 as a baseline year, uh, for our emissions reductions and be aligned with the state targets for net zero emissions by 2050. For the resilience sub-element, the requirements are that we, uh, address natural hazards created or aggravated by climate change, including sea level rise, landslides, flooding, drought, heat, smoke, wildfire and other effects of changes to temperature and precipitation patterns. Identify and protect and enhance natural areas, uh, to foster climate resilience as well as vital habitat for safe species migrations and not just human-focused, other species-focused too. All of the residents of Tumwater, maybe not the rocks, but, um, I should stop being funny. Oh, I'm not that good at it. Um, identify, protect and enhance community resilience to climate impacts, including social, economic and built environmental factors to support adaptation to climate impacts consistent with environmental justice. We needed to equitably enhance the resilience of communities and ecological systems to climate change. Be consistent with best available science, uh, and prioritize and, and benefit overburdened communities that will suffer disproportionately from environmental impacts and climate exacerbated natural hazards. Might also note that they might already be suffering disproportionately. Um, I put this slide in because I, I got a question once in, uh, council, uh, when presenting this information and they were like, there's no environmental justice issues in Tumwater. So I just want to note that, uh, basically every community is likely to have some disproportionate burden related to, um, environmental stressors or pollution. And here in Tumwater, um, air pollution is kind of our, um, worst enemy because we are bisected by a great state facility that gets us from point A to point B, near and far, but also has a lot of diesel particulate, um, matter because of I-5 and 101. Um, 10% of Washington adults and 6% of, uh, children have asthma. We actually have a higher rate, I think it's up to 13% in Thurston County compared to the state average. I can't, there's no, uh, study that says that's because of I-5. Um, that's my best guess. And I know that tailpipe pollution is not good for people's lungs and well-being as well as other species' lungs and well-being either. We also rank 10 out of 10 for proximity to superphone sites because we have one in town. And we're actively also working on brownfields, uh, cleanup. So we have some polluted sites, we have air quality issues. Um, these are things that we should work to alleviate for the betterment of all Tumwater residents as part of our work. Um, one Western Tumwater census track ranks eight out of 10 for population with disability, eight out of 10 for cancer deaths, nine out of 10 for deaths with cardiovascular disease and nine out of 10 for premature death. This is a, a index, uh, looking at social determinants of health, environmental determinants of health. This happens to be the track that I live in in Tumwater. Uh, so we have some work to do and some benefits that we can really reap by doing this work and doing it, um, earnestly. Um, and I mentioned the brownfields already, so.
Oh, Melissa, I'm sorry, can I ask a clarifying question? When you say eight out of 10, that is a score.
On the Washington State Department of Health Environmental Health Disparities Index tool.
So the higher the number, the worse?
Yes. Yep, uh, so these are things that we can work on. Obviously, people with disabilities is not a problem. This is something that is natural and people are part of our community. But maybe we have more amenities and services that need to be provided in that area to make sure that they can get to the bus, get to work, things of that nature. So there's often co-benefits to climate work that have, uh, social benefits for people.
And just recognizing that we have those honorable people that need services.
Yes. So I just threw that slide in there because I didn't want anyone to question and think that we are 100% good to go and that we have nothing to work on. We do have things to work on. Um, and those are some that are easily, uh, accessible from the public to look on the Washington State, uh, Department of Health Environmental Health Disparities Index map. This is based on a, um, methodology used in California, highly regarded, good, solid, um, information. And also our ranking for different areas, uh, makes us eligible for certain state funding depending on how, how overburdened or how disparate health impacts are.
It'd be good to know for that kind of information, you know, how, how that compares with, um, and I see the little map, but it's a little hard to read.
And that was just asthma.
Um, but how that compares with other areas of Washington.
Yeah.
Um, Olympia, for example, or a neighboring county. Um, you know, the, um, particularly with, um, air quality concerns with a lot of the wildfires, uh, that are possible early in the summer, but at other times of the year, it might actually be worse. be worse than even diesel emissions and car exhaust and kind of stuff. So, you know, there's other kind of factors at play here where we're not maybe seeing the full context with this, with a number like these, like these on the one index shown. So, you know, you can't really judge, you know, where are we with stuff?
There's where we are relative to others and the lives that people are living now, and there's the different ways of looking at it. But even if we are less worse off in certain areas to Eastern Washington during fire season, there are still a higher number of people in our community that have asthma, so any burden is hard on their bodies.
Feel bad. And it also plays into my earlier point of we are an older and an aging demographic here where you're going to expect more cancer, you're going to expect more asthma, you're going to expect more some of these other kinds of health issues. Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
When you look at eight of 10 for a population with disability, that may be because people with disability chose to live in Tumwater because the healthcare was so good. And that may be a positive rather than a negative.
You don't have enough context, is what I guess.
That's a matter of choice.
Right.
And I'm sure they didn't get disabled here in Tumwater for the most part.
Do we have that healthcare here, though? Do we have that healthcare here? I know personally, I go elsewhere for a lot of my.
I go to Tumwater Family Practice, it's the best doctors out of.
Yeah.
Gone to anywhere.
I'm such a new client.
Yeah.
Right, yes, and they're, yes, they're right here in Tumwater.
I think specialty work, there's elsewhere to go, but for general things, yes, I agree.
People make personal decisions for personal reasons, but if there are trends that can be alleviated with actions that we take to reduce suffering of our residents, I think, regardless of how many people or what personal decisions they make, that should be a guiding practice for our work. So, two seeds, one bird.
Well, I'm talking about limiting miles traveled by car. I travel to Seattle, Tacoma, other areas because I can't either get an appointment down here or because the specialist isn't here that I need. So I would rather not have to drive to those destinations, Bellevue, other places, because I do, I choose not to live there, I choose to live here, and I love it here. I would love if we had a few more specialists down here.
And you're not even elderly.
Car accident, real bad, so really messed me up.
Sorry.
So I've seen more doctors in the last four years than I have in my entire life, and it's.
But you're right.
I had to go outside for most of those, so that was the unfortunate thing.
Many of us are traveling north.
Yeah.
So moving on from just a crash course in some environmental justice concerns that we can work on through our work, the ways that we reached out for the climate element is we hosted a climate policy advisory team made up of a lot of people in affected populations, in affected workforces, residents with disabilities, electrician union folks, anti-pipeline activists, builders, the full gamut of anybody who may be impacted by climate change. We invited them, and they had a very intense experience being very, very active in shaping this work, wordsmithing everything, having several hour-long meetings several times in a week, getting to where they were happy. They are not the only people that we listened to, however. We also did an in-person open house at Osho Community Center down on Little Rock Road. We had about 60 people show up, which I think was the best attendance of all the open houses that we did for the climate element. I was very happy. We then did an online open house to make sure that people who couldn't attend in that one day, or maybe needed it interpreted, but we didn't know, had access to the same information and the same questions online for a longer period of time so they could participate, and people did. We had an open public comment period when we had our first draft, and we received a lot of comments from that. We did briefings with the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative's Community Advisory Work Group on both urban and rural. We didn't necessarily focus on Tumwater specific, but on what do they want to see for the urban comp plans and the rural comp plans, what's their vision, what are the important things? And then continually invited that community advisory work group to be involved in the process. Every, they have monthly meetings, so they were kept up to date and invited to participate. We did meetings and presentations with and to community-based organizations, nonprofits, local agencies. We tabled at the Tumwater Library and the Thurston County Food Bank location at Mountain View Church, which we already do on a quarterly basis anyway, but to reach folks that might not be able to, might not have broadband access, might not have been able to come to the open house, might not have been able to come to a meeting because of work schedules. So we did a lot to reach out. Did we miss people? Probably still, but we made, I think, a very earnest effort to hear from as many people as possible. We reached out to a lot of nonprofit groups and let them know when we were at different steps along the way in inviting people to participate. And like Dana reflected from Brad, comments are still always welcome. We received more than 240 comments. That is a brain-shaped word cloud I made from the comments. It's not really that helpful, but we're thinking about it. I just love that community is the first word. What we heard, this is a very brief synopsis of what we heard from the comments, support for climate action, demand for multimodal transportation system improvements and electric vehicle charging, preservation of green space and urban canopy, concern about heat and smoke, erosion of trust in city government. The open house happened very soon after a particular series of decisions came through about a particular tree. So there was erosion of trust, and we dove into that. We had a whole table discussion on, okay, how can we improve the way that we communicate? How can we work and build trust back? How did this feel? Ways that we could work on governance and community trust, because community is the biggest word there, and that should be the biggest word for climate action. Desire to engage diverse age groups and demographics. We did okay, but not great on that. We tried, still working on relationships. That's going to be life career-long for me to continue to build those relationships. We heard support for programs that benefit low-income, young, and elderly populations, a lot of stuff about building energy efficiency. And then we definitely had some conflicting viewpoints about incorporating equity and growth. A lot of the incorporating equity comments came in January. But we have state requirements to incorporate equity and environmental justice, so there was not much we could do in that regard, so we stuck with the state requirements, and there we go. I created a comment register where every comment that we received, granted, I received two today from one of our council members, so it's not up to date, I need to update and add to, and anything else that you all shared tonight.
And Ms. Norton's comments.
And Ms. Norton's comments, and Bonnie Blessings, and all the other ones. So there's some updating still to do. Like I said, comments are always welcome. I put the comment into the register, the author, where they came in, a staff response, and a little checkbox on if the feedback was incorporated or not. So we're being completely transparent on what was incorporated and what wasn't. For instance, scrubbing the word equity from the entire climate element was not incorporated because that is a state requirement. That's an example of feedback not incorporated. The climate policy advisory team went through the entire element and looked at the draft implementation actions and created a set of organically manifested prioritized priority categories. There was a lot of conversation on what language that we should use, should we make it so that it's not off-putting to others, should we be bold in our language? We let them do what they did, and this is what they came up with. There are, I think, six different prioritized categories. High impact climate actions, so these drive the greatest number of greenhouse gas emission reductions and/or will reduce casualties due to climate hazards immediately or in the near term. Easy wins, easier to accomplish, allowing Tumwater community to feel motivated by real and visible progress. Building longevity, creating a more equitable, just, and resilient community in the long term, but requires action to be taken now. Future-proofing for everyone, this one was really interesting. Helping untangle potential future conflicts, especially regarding environmental protections and buildings in the future development, to allow Tumwater to create policies and legislate on the side of climate action and be clear and transparent the whole way to make sure that developers know what is coming, they're at the table, we can do the climate actions, and they know what's coming, and it's clear. Everyday concerns equity, creating a more equitable and just community immediately or in the near term, addressing issues of economic injustice and making it possible for Tumwater's community members to access basic needs. We had some interesting conversations about Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan action that was incorporated into the climate element of 15-minute neighborhoods, and how people really wanted 15-minute neighborhoods where you could walk to a corner store or a grocery store, like a Spud's, for instance. Basically, the Wildwood Plaza in Olympia is like a shining example of this, a neighborhood center. And we had a community member that was on the CPAT say, that's cool, but I will never be able to afford to get my groceries at a grocery store like that. I can only afford to go to Walmart, so we need to make sure that we're still having adequate transit and transportation to larger box stores, even if that might not be everybody's favorite thing. It's a reality for many, so we can't put all of our eggs in the 15-minute basket. We have to be able to address both. So that's an example of everyday concerns and a prioritized action such as that, too.
And you need sidewalks to walk to Spud's.
And you need to not be whacked in the face with BlackBerry. Yes.
See people walking along in the ditch, and I just kind of go, oh.
Yeah. So I'm happy to take any questions or discussion now. That's basically what we heard, how we incorporated it. I tried to be as transparent as possible about every comment that we have received to date. I will update it with new comments, and we will upload that onto the website so that we have the more updated comment register there as well.
Good work. Next step?
The next steps, aside from this, I'm going to comment.
And making some edits.
At your next meeting, we'll be talking about the adoption schedule.
Okay.
And also talking and trying to get ideas from you of the best way for us to have the joint work sessions with the council. We have those scheduled as part of the process for adopting this whole gigantic thing, so I'd like to have a discussion about the best way, number one, to present the gigantic thing. You know, we've had the bite-sized chunks, as you can tell, with 150 pages for the climate element, but.
A lot of work to do.
It's going to get bigger. Particulate matter is actually accounted for wildfire and disparity.
All right. So I, another next step is that I will incorporate the feedback that you have received just today into the element, any other last-minute changes to finalize the draft for.
Did you share the good news?
No, you, we left all the good news for you to share in your report yet. We're about to, we're about to go to you in just a little bit.
Okay, what if you don't actually have good news?
Well, okay. Sit tight. Are we concluding with our, with our climate element, unless you all have any questions or concerns?
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, good work. All right. That part is done. All right, Brad.
You've got good news.
Let's go back up to item number six, Brad, Director's Report. Good news?
It's really good news. Number one, Erica's still with us. And Dana.
Right.
Despite the fact that I.
Thanks, Brad.
You did good. You did good.
Okay. A little cryptic, but.
We have very explicit engagement, a little slurred out about my involvement in the presentation and answered questions, and I violated those, so we've got a level of trust thing that we have to work through.
Okay.
Broken trust.
That'll be tomorrow.
Okay.
In the meantime, we had a very successful hiring process for a deputy director. We had four very good qualified candidates. We narrowed it down to two. And one has been, accepted our offer as of Monday, so Sharon will be joining us October 16. She will be taking over the role of the deputy, so she'll be working with her and Dana going forward, and also she'll be helping me with some of the bigger projects with them. So she has a ton of experience. I think both Erica and Dana are very supportive of her coming on board from a previous work experience with her. So I was very lackadaisical. She'll straighten everything out.
Yours, okay.
What I'm saying is, you've got a month or so to sort of play free and easy, and then things will be changing.
One of her, oh, go ahead. Name again is.
Sure, and I'm going to her last name.
Lumbantobing.
Lumbantobing.
Lumbantobing. Think it's Scandinavian.
So just like it says.
Yeah. Lumbantobing, yeah, it is spelled how it sounds.
I'm just going to suggest.
Welcoming?
Yeah, welcoming.
Good to do. All right. And that would be in our, in our September?
October, probably the second meeting in October.
Okay, late October. One shebang meeting. Okay. Yeah, it is. All right. All right.
Also, one of the things that was, she mentioned in her interview that I think aligns with some of the desires that you have and some of the things you shared at your interview from last year, interviews for Planning Commission, was that she, the staff reports are very important to her, and keeping them brief and concise is something that she values.
Essentially, she'll be correcting a lot of mistakes of the previous person, and that's okay because I think that's how progress is made.
Okay, that's good. Culture shift.
Accept that.
All right, Brad. It was no shame, just recognizing that that is something that we've asked us to work on, and we're working on it by hiring someone who also values that.
All right, very good. Looking forward, you're welcome here. Okay.
It's hot out.
All right. There was also a Planning Commission meeting from late July, and follow-up on the land use element, where you can talk about.
Yes, I apologize. I had written something up and included in your packet, and now I can't remember. So I might have to look at your packet to tell you what.
The land use, oh.
The one page you're.
Yeah, so it was regarding Commissioner Kirkpatrick's comments about trees. You sent in an email comment, and you were concerned that.
I discussed that at the last meeting.
Yeah, we discussed it, and then you sent a comment in via email, and I sent a response back in the packet.
So we all could see it.
They could all see it.
Right. By not seeing it.
And it was item 6A in your packet.
Okay.
Which, early on, roughly page 67.
There was a request for discussion and consideration of the Commissioner's thoughts on.
Right, yeah. Great. I'll go home and look at it. I didn't print that one.
In a roundabout way, the disparities, so it stemmed from the disparity study, or no, sorry, displacement study, and how one of the recommendations was, and it has a lot of wordsmithing and specific language, and Commissioner Kirkpatrick thought that the language should include to retain trees where possible was a better language. And so if you want to review that in detail, we can provide it. I might be able to bring it up on a slide. We have about 15 minutes if.
So we discussed it and resolved it, that the comments of the consultants were not being accepted by the city.
Yep, essentially.
So the consultant was that, heck with the tree, we're going to build more density.
Yep.
Is basically what, and it wasn't, it wasn't a maybe, it was, it was a blatant statement.
The memo just brought through the different rendition, or the different edits through when we talked about policy tables back in the first discussions of land use when I wasn't here yet, but when, you know, this body had those discussions, and then staff looked at like how we can improve the language, and then those edits, and then, you know, recognizing that disregarding our vegetation and not necessarily including that is not the direction that our community chooses to go. And so that's the benefit that we have. Any consultant can tell us what they think, and then we, as a community, get to say whether that, for the most part, barring regulations.
The two comments you have in here, or the two updates are great.
Yeah, okay.
That's exactly what we're looking for, so.
Perfect.
I'm satisfied.
Um, oh, that is a good, a good note. On the same note, Alyssa wanted to share.
I'm just, am not aware that the Planning Commission knows this or not, but we did hire a full-time urban forester who started May 1st. He's been with us for a couple months now and has been hard at work. He's actually was presenting to a homeowners association this evening about how the city and homeowners associations can work together on their trees.
Nice. I wonder, I think we may have.
I wonder, I, I think we may have shared it in, in real time, but this is in context, and it's always good to share, and maybe it would be great to have him when we get into tree code things.
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah. Great. Good. Well, I appreciate the follow-up on the, on the item that Cherry raised. It's sometimes the case that we bring something, and then, you know, it might be a little while before we see the notes, the summary notes from the meeting, but we, and we might lose sight of it, so I appreciate that follow-through on things. That's, I think, really important for continuity. All right. Brad, did you have anything else you wanted to mention? Okay, our next, our next meeting is going to be on the 9th. You see, the 9th of September, we're going to talk about schedules for adoption through the rest of the year, if not beyond, and then joint sessions with the council, and we're getting one or two to talk about that, and the other items, I guess, that we have. All right. I'm sure. I know there's a couple of us that are fairly new and don't know what the protocols are for those joint meetings. Are there some protocols? Do? This question, I mean, I think our rules of procedure apply no matter what, but generally what happens is we're both there, the mayor calls the role of council members, chair of Planning Commission calls the role of Planning Commission members, and then we just kind of have a free-for-all.
Yeah. It really is a structure for, that's on purpose, because we also want to make sure that we mix up the council members, so it's not like a gang of the council over here and the additional over there.
Right. But generally, the mayor is conducting the meeting, and she, I think, tries to do, and whoever the mayor is going to be in the future, tries to just make sure that there's good conversation about whatever the, whatever the topic is. I would say it's not, not much more formal than this. Okay. Is it open to the public? Yes, because it's a, there's a quorum of everybody.
There is a public comment for you, for the council for their work sessions. They don't take public comments, but obviously they receive public comments.
Okay.
But I, I think the, the importance of the discussion in our next meeting is to really focus in on the things that you want to talk to the council about as part of this process, and have those kinds of, you know, questions, and how do you, what kind of things should we be looking for to help the council feel comfortable with taking a recommendation? Or are there bigger issues we want to call out, of these are really important, that we want to call your attention to, those kinds of things. And the work session format allows a lot of flexibility in how that's done, but I want to make sure, I'm going to ask a similar question to the General Government Committee about what they feel they want to talk about on the council side. I want to make sure that we have the best prep for the conversation before we start it.
If you want to, you can go back and watch it, too. Revening. We can get you the date.
Like, oh, three-hour meeting?
No, we ran a fisher.
It actually-
It was an hour.
Hour, yeah.
Really? Oh, okay. Generally, they go off and do their meeting, and then we've-
So it's a three-hour meeting.
You saw my eyeballs in doing it.
Just an hour of it's the joint.
To your, to your point, though, about, you know, the, the public attendance, because there's a potential, since there's quorum of both bodies, especially the council, then it has to be open. Yeah. Whether there's actions, you know, taken is a different question, but because there's a potential for that, for sure. And do we all have to be there in person? No?
My preference would be, and I'll state a preference for being in person, only because it's a lot easier to communicate-
You bet.
-around the table than it is by boxes.
Yeah.
And that's, I'm not as concerned necessarily about the Planning Commission, because you've been very good about being in person, having that interaction. It's something we're going to, we're going to move on with.
Oh, my apologies. All right. Well, seeing as how it looks like our, our business has concluded this evening, just six minutes to spare, guys, I'm, I will adjourn our meeting.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. It's a longer meeting.
Good night.